This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay.
As I hit mute.
Call the regular meeting, uh, two twenty fourth meeting to order. Roll call, we have everyone here. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have a couple changes. Um, if you can remove number one from requests and presentations, Lane was not available tonight, so he will not be here. Um, you can add number three to resolution twenty four dash fourteen, uh, declaration of local emergency. And then you can add number six to new business, uh, twenty twenty-three final audit.
Do you want to do anything else you want to add? Okay. Need motion to approve the agenda of change.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda items. Two items here.
We'll do, uh, approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed. Public comments? Yes.
I would like to say congratulations to the maintenance crew and the water individuals. They did a fabulous job this past weekend. Greatly appreciate what they did and hopefully the rest of the city will do the same thing and that they will follow instructions of stuff that is put out by the city for helping manage water.
Well, some people haven't figured that out. There's a lot of stuff on there that shouldn't be.
I just wanted to say that, that it's on record that there are individuals that greatly appreciate their work.
Thank you, Larry.
Individuals put in some long hours. We thank you for that. Okay, down to, uh, public hearings, ordinance two oh five dash oh one.
Can you open that at six thirty-three? You can leave it open, ask if anybody has anything to say and then you can just leave it open and we come back to it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about it? Okay, we'll just keep it open till the end of the meeting. Ordinance is in resolution. First one is resolution twenty four thirteen.
Okay, twenty four thirteen is a resolution just updating our current, uh, fee schedule. Um, long story short, uh, got a bill from Loken for some of our stuff and happened to be looking at, um, what our charges were and they were charging us way more than we were charging for our stuff. And so I started going through, looking through our stuff and, uh, just currently updated everything. So, long story short, the rental property updates are cost to our building inspector plus a little bit of extra money to cover our, you, our admin costs for, uh, mailing and, and notification and that kind of stuff. Um, NSF check fee went up. That's just the maximum allowed to charge by law. Um, mowing snow sidewalk and we added weed control to the thing. Basically, these fees are there to try to get people to not want us to do that for them. And we, we're not trying to make money, we're trying to discourage. That's actually on the very low end compared to all the, all the area, uh, and that I looked at for around us. So, so this would be the first time in the season one twenty-five, the second time one fifty, and then anytime after that it'd be two hundred dollars each time that it had to be happen. Honestly, usually one or two times a season, we end up charging somebody for mowing. So, um, and then
Weed control.
We've never charged weed control before.
I mean, we should start charging the railroad for the junk that they got down in the railroad.
Well, we, that we've, that's why we added it, because there are places that we can a- address weed controls. So, um, skid steer we replaced because we don't have a tractor anymore, so that's on there. And then the dump truck, uh, is basically matching what contractors are charging for their stuff. And then our employee labor charge got changed. So, those are the changes that were made.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve it.
Okay. We have motion, we have a second. Second. Okay, any more discussions or questions for Tony? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Aye.
Ordinance two oh five point oh one.
Uh, you can skip that till we're done with the, uh, public hearing. You can move on to resolution twenty four fourteen.
Resolution twenty four fourteen.
So twenty four fourteen is basically just, uh, extension of the mayor's emergency resolution from June twenty-second. Um, and it basically allows that to stay open for thirty days in case we have additional damages due to additional rains or anything like that. I did, uh, touch base with emergency management director Denise Wright and just asked her since our floodwaters had receded if, if we should just maintain what the mayor had and she'd recommended that we did at least adopt it one time with the council to give us thirty days to come up with any damages or anything like that. So, um, I would recommend the council adopt that resolution. Yeah.
Motion for resolution twenty four fourteen.
We have a motion in the second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All in, motion passes. Department's report, uh, here, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. So, I would also like to pair up that comment made by the, can't remember your name, sir.
Larry.
Uh, I was here on Saturday night, uh, checking on our nursing home and, and where the water levels were at and I thought they were all I, I did try to help a little bit. I said, Shell, you need to go do something. I can, I can stand here and tell people not to play in the water. I didn't have to talk to anybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tony came and relieved me. Jan. Um, so operation wise at the nursing home, uh, as you see there, our average census in the month of May was thirty-seven point seven seven. We're down one point five residents, uh, per day per month. Um, our current census is no longer thirty-six, it is actually thirty-seven and by the end of the week we should be, you know, possibly back at thirty-seven. We have two more people tomorrow, but I think we got a couple more people moving home. We did, we had thirty referrals in the month of May, uh, eight accepted, five admitted, three others, uh, either went somewhere else or passed away. We did deny twenty-two and as I told the advisory board, we denied twenty-two. We had, uh, people with drug abuse problems, alcoholism, violent tendencies, uh, things that we can't have in the nursing home, it's not good for our population. And then we also had a few, uh, not so many things that we, in the past, I used to report that, uh, the acuity was too high, we can't take care of because the nursing staff is, has gotten some more, or gotten education on those things that we thought in the past we couldn't take care of and they're doing very well. We've got, we've had a couple of people with IV therapy, nursing staff has done, been accountable with that. We've got people with, uh, skin issues and getting, or have had people with the skin integrity and they have done a great job. So, the nursing staff at the care center has learned some new things or relearned some things that they probably learned in nursing school and now it's part of their daily repertoire. So it's very good for them. Um, we did discharge six people, uh, three went home and three passed away in the month of May. Financially, uh, we're looking at income of opera, income from operations of twenty thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars in the month of May. That is down slightly from April simply because toward the end of the month, we have need near as many agency staff. That trims that a little bit. June, July, and August, and I'm hoping that, or as I see it, with the college students and our high school students being able to work more consistently, uh, that is in our favor probably by thirty, thirty-five thousand. So it will be an improvement for that. I, I'm really happy to have the number of people that we have come back from college and our high school students, like we have six new nurse aides and not all tested out yet, but they are right on the cusp of becoming certified and that is in their, they're doing a big job. We had six new hires in the month of June, which makes us feel really good to have reported. Wow, we went for months with nobody. Then month of June, we had six new hires. Add that to the five we had in May and we're, we're catching up. Sorry to interrupt you. May celebrations, uh, we had nursing home week and second week of May, uh, celebrated by staff and residents, uh, Golden Age Radio was this year. They always have a theme. Not a guy like me that sets this up, obviously. But they have a theme and we had groups and they put together themed days for our people. We had, uh, Big Bang music playing one day, uh, country music playing another day, um, Waltz and polka music playing and then Thursday they had kind of a back to the fifties theme. So, we not only did the music, did the games, you know, named that tune and all those kind of things, but we feed people. That's what we do best, we feed people, take care of them, give them fast enough. Uh, we had ice cream, we had floats, we had cheeseburgers and fries on Friday, just like you went back at the mall shop. So people were really excited about it, so. Residents, uh, been in some buck rides and the Tri Shop, I want to mention the Tri Shop because the Tri Shop we got two years ago, or almost two years ago now, last summer was the first summer that we got to use it. This summer, we have got to use it a lot already. The Tri Shop, weather pending, will be in the parade with residents on it. So, we're looking forward to that. I mean, so, uh, that was, uh, purchased with, by use of a grant, is that right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're really looking forward to that. But like I said in the, in my notes, it's a great way for the residents to get out over by the ground. Some of the guys that, you want to come out to activities? No. Gunsmoke them. Do you think? They will come up and go over by the ground. Really cool. So, uh, also planning a family picnic for August second. The families of residents and staff will be able to enjoy the music of Todd Updahl at three P M. and a meal that will be served by, or made and served, I rather use the phrase, uh, at five o'clock. Uh, Nancy's, I think, is gonna make a dessert. I'm not sure what she's making. Trying to do everything well with, but it's one of those things where you feel bad when you say, we're gonna invite all these people in. Kitchen crew, you need to make food. Everybody else can be out celebrating, you're gonna be cooking. So, we're gonna have somebody else to be cooking. And we can manage that and do very well.
When's August second?
It's a Friday.
Friday?
Yep. And we have, kind of have to do it on a Friday, so we got plenty of people there to help. So, looking forward to music, we're trying to have some outdoor games so that kids can maintain and occupy and, you know, keep them out of trouble, I can't think. Unless, of course, we still have Lakeshore property. Let's see. Um, we'll also be doing a silent auction that day. Uh, things that, uh, each department is going to build either a basket or make a donation to so that we raise money for a new flagpole. Ours is not even. Residents have been on me, oh, since last year. So, I need to get that in. Staffing, as always, certified nurse aides aren't helping. Every shift, every day, all day, please email somebody, refer them.
Are you exercising?
No, we, we have to say, had two housekeepers hired this month.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's really big. Anything else? Any questions?
How many veterans do you have? You know, do you have a couple?
I think, God.
Because I, I could talk to our Legion also, we might be able to help you with that flagpole.
Okay. Yep. And, oh, Brian, uh, Brian mentioned the Legion here too, so I am more than, I could ask the Legion to recruit one, I never even thought of it, but you're more than willing to help, accept the help, um, no matter what.
We just had a meeting last Monday, so we won't have another meeting until April of July.
Okay. I'd be grateful.
I can answer for you.
Sure. Um, yeah, I think we've got four now. At one point, when I first got here, I think we had a lot. Really quite a, a big community of veterans. And, uh, the Legion riders, I think they're from Albert League, but they cover the whole area, come in every, uh, veterans day. And it's really a team group, give everybody a coin. We have two of them now.
Okay, any questions for Bob? Need motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Okay, well.
All right, as part of the, part of kind of sort of care, as Bob's reporting, the care center advisory board wanted to address you guys, uh, regarding, uh, Bob and I spoke to him before the meeting and he's, uh, comfortable with, with, uh, this process, so, um, Brian was going to address you guys, but he had another commitment, so he provided me with some information to, to address for you. So this is from Brian to the city council. Um, first, thank you to all who serve in the government, it's a daunting task nowadays. Second, here to speak on behalf of advisory board, uh, we are all new, I'm, I am just now reaching first year except for Dawn, we are all new. Number three, we are wanting more clarification on the process of how the council wishes for us to conduct the evaluations leading to the recommendations of salary increases for the care center administrator. However, I ask to meet with the council on a future date to discuss that situation. To the best of our ability, considering in the short time most board members have been on the council, using a combination of our own observations, going back through past records, administrator's performances, the measurable drop in complaints from residents, employees, families and residents and the recommendations of past board members, we have developed suggested pay increase we feel is fair and is already overdue. Staff were given two, three percent pay increases as well as other incentives in the years since I have been on the board and the future after developing standard upon, standard agreed upon procedures, there will be more thorough measures for our recommendations. In lieu of said paper trail with no quarterly or semi, semi-annual reviews to consider, we believe that two, three percent raises should also be awarded to the current administrator. We are not requesting that we made retroactive, our recommendation is a six percent raise now, uh, in the interest of retention of a valuable employee. We believe the changes he has made in streamlining and increase in profitability will be more of them, more of the pay will be, profitability will be more of the pay for the increase. So that's the recommendation from the care center board. Um, I did look into it and as you know, that, uh, Bob's position does fall on the city of New Richland's pay scale. So, uh, from where he currently is, if he moves to step six, would be a two point eight percent increase and if he moved to step seven, it'd be a five point nine percent increase, which would be kind of in line with what the care center advisory board would suggest. Um, it's ultimately up to the city council what they choose to do.
Do they want action like that now?
Uh, I think they're looking to comp, to aw, award him for his successful performance review, yes.
Bob, when the state gave all that money for staff, that was for anyone that made less than thirty dollars or less an hour, right?
Correct.
So you didn't receive any finance person, didn't you?
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, yep, so the, if step six is fifty-two eighty-eight, step seven is fifty-four forty-seven and step six would be two point eight percent and step seven would be five point nine percent. So.
What was the care center? The advisory board right there?
Six, so five point nine would put us right there.
That motion, do you think?
I move to, uh, increase, uh,
Step seven, fifty, fifty-four point four seven.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Motion in the second, any more discussion, question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yep, thanks. Okay, Shell?
Okay.
You're not sleeping, huh?
Almost. Okay, let's just start in May. Uh, we, uh, I discharged a few times in May. We had some bad days, um, made it through it, it was fine. Um, the only thing that's going on is that the chlorinator pump blew off. This pump is a twenty-four thousand dollar pump that we got in nineteen ninety-two. I tore it apart. There's a plastic piece in there is what needs to be replaced. It's plastic. So I'm on the hunt for the plastic piece. It's out there, but otherwise no one tears them apart. It's just a little piece of plastic and I will find the plastic. Because why would we buy another one for twenty-four thousand dollars? So I have a, a made up setup thing. It's working, we're, we find it. So.
Isn't there a shop around here that could contract out somebody to three D print that plastic piece?
I have no idea.
Their home's got it.
Well, it's detonated right now, so as long as you can go find out the size on it, but I don't know. And I don't know the plastic either, so. But that is a great idea. I'll remember that one. Maybe once I get it, I can have a make it.
A second one to have.
So I'm working on that, but I have my own set of work plans, so it's on the road. Um, the effluent sampler, that is what keeps, it's like a little outdoor refrigerator to keep the samples cold. Does not refrigerate, but they're eight to ten thousand dollars. So right now, I fill, I buy two big bags, I put them in a bag garbage bag, I wrap them around the container, it's a twenty-four hour sampler, so it has to run for twenty-four hours and it has to be below, um, below four. Four, it can't go in at six degrees Celsius, so I'm keeping it at five hundred five, so. And every Wednesday it's getting a little much, so I'd like to ask you, the technician, to come out and see what's wrong with the refrigeration instead of going to go buy another sampler, because it could be, maybe it just holds your refrigerant.
Is that something that anybody can do or?
Um, usually it's, yeah, any, I
Any plumbing person?
If I needed a part, I'd have to go through like Teladine Sgo or something like that, but if they could diagnose it.
Yeah.
So then
That's right.
So if you could find a refrigerator, an electrical person, maybe it's just the wire in there, the sensor. And there are a couple hundred compared to a new sampler. So, if you guys can find someone, that would be great. Or if you want me to find someone.
Is there a number on the refrigerator of like the company?
Oh, yeah, I talk to them all the time. And with them, it's about five, six hundred bucks to come out. So I don't know what you want me to do.
Well, it's, it's gotta be done.
Yeah.
I would say I would
Find someone or
I'd say find someone.
Yeah, Teladine can do it. It's about five, six hundred bucks to come out, not fully parts, so. And that's the parts for it, so.
It doesn't seem like a lot of money.
It doesn't seem like a lot, but
For a, for a, like a house call.
I feel like going with someone that knows the machine is better than.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the basement. The basement is very humid. There is a house humidifier that has been in there for years. The pipes are rusting. A high dry, well, we have a milk water treatment plant is the, about the kind that you live in there. I don't know if any of you have been in that basement, out at the plant.
How much are they?
I don't know. I know, it's, they're John Schminz.
Yeah, they can be anywhere from twenty-five to five.
Uh, just depend on your space. But it, it, you need, your pipes are not gonna make it forever with the humidity coming in.
So something we should do now?
Well, I think about I put on the budget for, I mean, I wouldn't wait five years or anything, but I would definitely get on it.
Could we get estimates so that we can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can haul it over and figure it out.
Were you saying twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
I don't know what you mean. This is in a basement, I mean, I have fans running and stuff, but it's, the pipes are getting rusty.
Yeah, I just get some estimates.
Yeah. You will, you guys or you want me to?
You can.
Um, otherwise, yeah, I had another two hour bypass on May twenty-fourth and then June first, I had a two point nine million, um, bypass from June first for a couple days. And then me and Eric went and opened all the manholes on Division. Most of that water was coming from Broadway to, um, Ash is where we found it, but it was too heavy, so we couldn't get the camera in there to check it out. So there is something going on there on that street, we just don't know what, but it was a lot of water. So we just tracked it backwards till we found it. So as soon as it settles down, I'll have MRWA come out, we'll camera that, see what's in it. Maybe there's just something broke or whatever. And then this last weekend, I want to thank everyone for everything. It was, it was a long weekend, but we did good. I mean, everybody helped, so it was, it was perfect.
I want to thank Janda. Janda was there almost all day Saturday helping Shell with everything. It was way more than she needed to do and that was awesome, so thank you, Janda.
You're welcome. Anywhere to help, I mean.
She did really good. She was in a wake up call every hour. Yeah. Forty-five minutes to an hour for the wake up to put gas on the pumps, so. Yeah, I just stayed at the
He's just like, she slept in the truck.
And sleep with my tobacco.
It was the, it was honestly, it was the first time that we've had people who have been very unhappy with us come up and thank us for the work that we've done, um, during this type of situation. So it was actually, we feel like we did a good, good job this time, so.
I mean, we even had county commissioner there.
Doug Christofferson was there helping us. I mean, it was, it was, it was, yeah, it was, it was good.
And we had a storm right during it all, you know, think about it.
It was, yeah, it was, it went very well.
Very smooth.
Yeah. So.
And today I went, um, this afternoon, I checked that manhole on Broadway in thirty. It was, it was just fine, but it was running very heavy. We still have a lot of water. It's coming in about twelve hundred gallons a minute out at the plant, which is a lot. That's a lot. So, but yeah, four point one million gallons since Friday and six hundred and fifty thousand from that manhole and still bypassing, so. But yeah. It's all I can tell you.
When you bypass it, where does it go?
Huh?
When you bypass it, where does it go?
To the creek.
To the creek.
Yeah.
And it goes that way, correct?
Mm-hmm, goes all the way to St. Clair and then up to the Minnesota River, which Blue Earth is needing and with that.
Okay.
There, yeah, so all of our water goes straight up there. Yeah. Which doesn't go from them.
No.
But we're not the only town that was biopathic, see, there's
Everybody.
Everybody else.
Everybody. And I took all the samples, called it in, I did all the right stuff.
I'll do it.
Yeah. And I probably won't shut it off, so I'll, I tested it today and it would work, so it was too much water. So I'll try it again tomorrow and see you in tomorrow afternoon and we'll just play it right here. The compliance officer knows, I talked to her again today, so she knows we're trying everything. So, yeah, any questions about anything?
Good job and thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve the people's service report.
Second. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thanks, Shell.
Jim has last one.
I'm a little closer here. All right, thank you. Hello.
Do you want me to make that bigger for you?
What's that?
Make that bigger for you?
I have to do it every while, always look up here. Uh, Olson came in and did the second bell. Everything went wonderful. And it was right after that when I started checking. Um. Street signs said, you know, I think are helping. I hope. Um, it was, uh, thank you for letting us open that all up. So it really looks, well, couldn't imagine if we didn't have it, opened up now, so. Um. Uh, U L Ns, uh, they should be done now.
And they were still working when I left this afternoon, so they should be in close.
I have a question on.
Yep.
Ash.
Yep.
The center of the street wasn't ripped up and they're not gonna be bad?
No, cause that's gonna take more. No. We're just, we did, we just should have full size, yeah, cause that's where we started the rod office, right where the, the churches are, even more people are turning in and out there.
I didn't know that.
Yep. So, um, and then, uh, June twenty-sixth, I believe tomorrow, no, two days, no. Um, they're gonna wash out the tower, the inside. Not the outside. Okay.
I think that's next year, I think.
But I think when we do that, we might want to talk about, uh, changing color.
Yeah, I think painting is two years from now. I think they wash, what, I think they wash and then the next year they paint, I think. I think.
So, um, so then I was gone vacationing two and a half, two weeks ago, um, and they ripped out the railroad tracks. Go down there, it's all gone, looks nice. Uh, I think next year, I think we can get it bid on, um, repaving it and making it smooth. So, um. Got a lot, uh, got, got a lot going on for next week before Farm City Days. Did we hear anything on the raft and the ropes and stuff, all of it away?
Um, we're just waiting for testing to come back. We should hear tomorrow, maybe.
Okay. Perfect. Uh, through the storm, um, we have two trees that I feel are more important as of right now. Um, the one in the park is, uh, out of our hands, I feel it's too big, it's, um. Sorry, that's not on here.
No, no.
Um, and then the one by Jay Johnson's, it's, uh, uh.
By the way, Wagner Foods Parking Lot Corner.
Yeah, and if you look up at the, up at the top, it's all rotten, it's right, going right towards there. So I kinda, I, uh, I had McLeuns come in last night. Um, and I think we'll take care of both of them and, uh, remove the stumps for eight hundred dollars. Both crazy?
Both.
Eight hundred dollars, it's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a very good deal.
Yeah. I was, I was shocked when he said that, Michael. Yeah, so I think you doubt. Good to go.
We'll need a motion on that.
We'll need a motion there.
Do you want? Oh, I'll make a motion to have McLeuns remove the two trees for, for eight hundred dollars.
I'll second. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. And like I said, I, I did have this on her, on here, cause it, it was this yesterday. Um, he also started talking about the, the, um, board, uh, what's that called?
Ash Board?
And, uh, he said there is companies around that do it for about a hundred and fifty dollars a tree, but you have to do it twice in two years. So maybe something we might, I don't know what, not a tree.
It's a spray treatment.
Oh, the spray, spray treatment, got it.
No, they, I think they drill a hole.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it might be something we might be interested in, in budget or something.
Do we have any that are affected right now that you know?
I don't believe, he didn't think there's anything. He was looking at them, he didn't feel it, but he said it might be worth.
How many trees do we have, you know?
I might have to talk to Matt.
Cause of a hundred and fifty dollars a box, that could.
So, yeah, absolutely.
But if we can put it in a budget to save some money for future, that would be.
Yeah. So let's keep, really, it's not true.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's her, not me.
Yeah, it's Shell, it's Shell.
Just Shell, nobody else. We need a motion to accept the weekend's report. Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to new business. May, uh, check register.
You should have that in front of you. I had to print it off, because we weren't ready.
You want to have any questions for Tony? Tony?
Law enforcement labor.
That's L E S, that's Union News.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the May check register?
I'll make the motion to approve the May check register.
You have a second? Okay, motion in a second, any questions for Tony? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now the, uh, May, um, financials.
I feel like halfway through the year, we're at thirty-six percent, that's pretty, pretty good.
Yeah. You found all those things you couldn't find and everything, you know?
Yeah, well, so we still have a little bit of, so I'm, we're finding out quickly that the new system may not be exactly as, any better than the old, the old system for finding stuff. It's still making weird deposits like P S N is, so. But we'll figure it out. It's just a matter of trying to figure out how things go. Once we, once we found out how to get to the place where we could find out where stuff was, then it's a little bit easier, so. But yeah, so this, this, this month was still half P S N, half P A, so it was still kind of a little bit of a challenge, but next month will be the first full month where we have just the new utility software, so. Should be much easier.
But you'll let us know when, where the, if you find where it's coming from, where it's not balancing, right? You said it's not balancing?
No, everything's balancing, no, everything's good.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve the May financials? I'll wait that moment. Motion in a second, any more questions or any questions for Tony? All in favor?
The last page, you gotta divide by zero there.
Yeah, that's just like, we've talked about that many, many times, that's just a calculation error, that if there's nothing there to divide by, or.
There shouldn't be anything in that column.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Hey, any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, purchase of a Lucas device for the ambulance.
Um, so as you know, we received that fifty-three, seven eighty-one from the emergency service funding for the council, they wish to split it between the fire, ambulance and police departments. Works out to be seventeen, nine twenty-seven per department. Ambulance would like to use this money towards purchase of a new Lucas. The Lucas cost is nineteen, two fifteen seventy-five, leaving approximately twelve hundred and eighty-eight seventy-five. Uh, believe that'll be offset with some money donated by the fire department towards the ambulance. But regardless of what happens, there is that money available in the ambulance's budget for equipment, so.
I'll make a motion that we run with the purchase of a Lucas machine.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ambulance pay discussion.
Uh, Jody asked us to be on the agenda and I believe, uh, Director Sunbi provided you guys all with information via email. Um, and then. I also.
I decided I'm out with recruiting and retention, uh. We could get an increase for them. I want the recommendations on the, that were at the bottom of that email. Please stated upping to thirty-five dollars per call and upping the on-call time. Three for weekday, then I believe four for weekend, cause that's how I read that, correct? Um, I wouldn't mind adding for either debate or discussion. The ones that do take a bunch of dollars may be that incentive that, that something in place over sixty hours, though the thought. Does that sound like a bonus?
The what?
Maybe that's coming from other cities too, but maybe to add for debate discussion too, like there was one of them, maybe being members that pick up sixty plus, cause you're mandatory right now, it's forty-eight.
Forty-eight, I'd be thinking about increasing that.
So I did put together a survey for the ambulance members and asked Sarah to send it to them, because in the past, ambulance members have not been happy when they haven't been a part of the discussion. And in the past, people have been mad when we've added money to runtime, people have been mad when we've added money, mad when we've added money to call time. We've tried to fix this many different ways and it's never really been fixed. So I just wanted to get kind of an idea of where they feel, what would help. So this is just kind of what we've, twelve responses of what you got. So pretty much everybody says call time compensation is what's important to them for the most part, more than run pay. They figure, most of them feel run pay should be a flat amount as opposed to an hourly rate. Uh, most of them feel like taking more for call time than run pay is more important. Looks like the majority of people feel four to five dollars an hour is what they feel is an acceptable rate to be on call during the week. Some said ten, some said three, but most of them said between four and five dollars an hour. On the weekends, it's anywhere from five to seven to ten, five to seven, it's kind of the average. And then for the most part, everybody felt like the current weekend holiday bonuses are acceptable, that they're being paid. Um, the flat rate. Most people said thirty-five to forty is kind of the mean number, I guess, for the most part. Then I just asked if, if they're, if you decided you wanted to go to an hourly rate, what would be fair? Most of them said twenty to twenty-five bucks an hour, so. That's your responses from the crew, just for thoughts.
Okay. What are your thoughts?
I feel that it is, like, we need to do something because for people to stay on, we're doing a great service for us and our community. That we need to, I believe we have, it should be able to be workable in our budget that we have right now. I, I feel it would be a good thing to do, to keep everybody.
Agreed.
And the recommendations that Sarah had put in there, that would be great, you know, this, what are your thoughts for?
Can you figure out, somebody pencil saying if you did this rate on whatever you said, what would it cost in your budget?
She has a copy of it.
Yeah.
With the new rate?
The new rate, yes.
Would you figure it out, what, about, five dollars?
Yeah, I know, I still have it with me, do you have it on hand with you? I'm sorry.
Was it probably more than three, four, or? What, four, five?
Um, three, three and four is kind of where it was at, and then, um, weekends was a little bit different as well, you know, so.
Yeah, so weekday and then weekend was four, that's why I just said, three, four, or?
We, we were looking at what she's used so far this year, there's, you know, what she's already used and what we still have left budgeted. Increase in it even a certain amount, we would be fine, even if we didn't have to increase, um, like we have the Medicare charge amount, you know, that we bill out. We wouldn't have to increase in it, we'd still be fine with what we have budgeted. Um, we kind of talked different avenues of things.
What did you discuss with the run amount?
Um.
Little mixed with the survey, I thought they wanted more for run.
Well, we had talked when Sarah and I got together, we were to talk, kind of point ideas for everything else, thank you. Mine's at home under a bunch of water. Um, so weekday was three, weekend was four, and then the thirty-five per run is what we had calculated. So we had figured out.
This is the current, unless it's.
This was current, right?
Yeah.
These two here?
Yeah. These whole, this whole, it was current.
That's going up. So right now, weekday about fourteen thirty-seven. Weekend is sixteen ninety-two. Holiday one forty-four, so a total of thirty-two seventy-three. Going up to the three and four and the thirty-five per runs, we're looking at twenty-one fifty-five fifty for weekday. So it is an increase. It's about a thirteen hundred dollar difference between what we are now and bumping it up to the three and four.
Good.
Thirteen hundred over a certain period of time.
This is, yes, this is week, weekly, right?
That's monthly.
Monthly, monthly.
That's hard to gauge, that going down the run.
Right, I mean, this has a run, but going back history.
At least.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, historically, we'll be doing.
Yeah, this was going off of, this was May's, correct? Yes.
So Tony, did you put any math to this and were you?
Well, you're only, I mean, right now, you're sitting at, ambulance wages are at forty-one percent of what's budgeted right now at, at the end of May. So you have seven months left of the year. So. If you go up, there's a chance you could be over.
Depends on.
Yeah. We've got that forty-five thousand dollars sitting in insurance right hostage. It's budgeted, that I don't think, we didn't spend it last year, I don't think.
And I think you're probably correct, but that's one of those things where you, we don't have crystal ball. But I, I, I would, I would echo your statement that yes, I don't believe we'd be writing that off. And I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what we actually wrote off.
Do we need to change our base rates for ambulance today?
Uh, I will, I, I guess I didn't.
Looking at getting a base rate for that, there are some that are seven hundred, two, anywhere to twelve hundred base rate, so, um.
Yeah, Wells is like eleven fifty-five.
We'll be able to do that next, um, at the end of the year, for the budget for the end of the year, I'll get the, those numbers to use, so that we have a good, uh.
What's the foundation of those? Comparable to us.
They're a little bigger.
Maybe two thousand.
Not much bigger than us.
Yeah, it's fairly, no.
I mean, the other, the other thing too is you could, you could, you know, start this August first and then that would, you know. Or you could even go, well. August first would.
And we can raise rates anytime, is that correct?
Yeah, you can raise rates anytime, we just have to notify billing companies and stuff like that, well.
For three or four months to see what it looks like, if we need to raise rates. Right then.
Yeah.
And especially when we look at the budget.
And the company that's been billing, our charges have been doing an excellent job, is what I've been hearing, cause they've, things have been getting coded for payments, so we've been getting payments faster, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Where we don't have so much that we aren't there.
Hey, do we have a motion to? I'll make that motion, it'll be raised to, uh, was it three, four and thirty-five?
Yeah, three for weekday, four for weekend.
Effective.
I guess August first, I don't know, can I do it July first?
You can do whatever you want to, I just, I'm, I'm a little. You can do whatever you want to, I just, I'm, I'm a little apprehensive about July first with us being at, you know, close to fifty percent, and we still haven't made it six months yet. But it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's ultimately up to you guys, so. I mean, you, you, you can, I mean, we can adjust, we can adjust to whatever, so.
So are you saying August for just? August. A second. Okay. Motion in a, motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Um, you also probably should a- address Sarah Sunbi's director's wages as well.
That was in the email.
Yeah, we were gonna address it, but I was gone on vacation, so I didn't want to try to address that without, but Jan and I did meet with her, and she did have a successful performance review, and we are recommending that she get a three percent increase in her salary.
Cause it has been quite a few years since that's been done.
So, and that, that same, similar, that won't affect the budget too much terribly either, so.
I'll make that motion.
And that's effective, that's effective immediately.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Broadway lighting.
Um. As you know, there are many lights that are down on Broadway, um, we haven't really been addressing it because the style of head that was in there at the time is, was a very expensive head. Um, it was close to seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars to replace all the stuff that was wrong with all the lights that were, that were on there. Um, I, well, maybe it was, this was twelve, I was thinking a different, but the twelve thousand initially. Um, Delane was able to find a much less expensive head that uses a screw-in L E D bulb, that actually Eric and Brayden are able to replace the bulbs on themselves, and we can actually have spares on hand. The cost to fix all those is five thousand dollars instead of twelve thousand dollars. Um, and Delane said that if you approve that, he can have them done by Farm and City Day, so that all the light is working by that time.
This doesn't affect the visual look of it, does it?
It'll be the same, same covers, the same, it'll look exactly the same, it's just that it's a screw-in bulb. The guts inside will be different than what is there now. So, and there is, there is, but there is money in the maintenance and street budget to take care of it. So, it's up to you guys, but I think that it definitely needs to be done, the lighting is really certain to look bad on Broadway, so.
I'll make a motion that would go with Delane's, um, estimate of five thousand dollars for a street light, twelve street lights, it falls inside.
Okay, we have a second? Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, the twenty-twenty-three final audit?
All right, apologize, Lane, Lane called this afternoon, and they were double booked, and he was not able to get here to do, uh, go through the, the audit presentation with everyone, um, he apologizes profusely. Um, so I can just go over this high-level um, presentation, but I do have the, each of you has a copy of the full audit here. Uh, does need to be approved tonight, because it has to be filed with the auditor's office by July first.
Any findings?
Um, no instances of non, oh, I shouldn't say that. So obviously, we give our normal stuff, the limited segregation of duties, financial statements. Uh, there were a few issues with sales tax, um, filings from prior years and, and moving on to this year's, and that's just, um, just part, I forgot one time, and now I have a reminder set, so that shouldn't happen again. Um, it just, it has to be done on the twentieth every single time, and, and there, the state of Minnesota is not forgiving in any way, shape or form, so. Uh, there was some issues with some absences, and then some bank reconciliations, and then, um, the relief association, when, when somebody retires, they get a check from the state to help pay out their retirement, but we have to cut that check back to the relief association within a certain amount of time. Well, if that check comes in electronically at the first part of the month, and we don't do our bank recs until like the fifteenth or later, I don't always see that come through our checking account. And it's, so they found out that it didn't get there in a certain amount of time, so now I'm checking those more regularly to make sure that it's there. Um, general fund balance is much better off than where it was in the past. And Lane is coming either to the first meeting or second meeting in July to walk us through all these numbers more in depth than to answer any of your questions that you have, so. But.
You need it approved tonight, don't you?
Yeah.
Looks like we had about a two-hundred thousand dollar budget surplus.
Yep.
Might read this, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Don't spend it like the state did, right?
Nope, uh, the only thing we did have was our, our sewer fund is, our, we did, I did a really good job bumping up our water fund, and our sewer fund tanked, so, so, um, I actually have Jesse putting together a proposal to do a rate study, just to see. I, I can do a pretty good job of trying to navigate that, but I'm not an expert in that, so I kind of want to get a second opinion, but I also think now, after talking, I think that Minnesota Valley Council of Governments might do that for free, so I'm gonna reach out to them and see if they'll be willing to help us with that as well. Basically, that'll, they'll, they'll do like a, uh, give us a five-year idea of where we need to set our rates to kind of get our funds back and, you know, where they need to be, so. Cause like, right now, we could easily lower our water rates and increase our sewer rates, and basically, our customers would see a, not see an increase at all, it just lower our, our water rates and increase our sewer rates, and we just fund the sewer a little bit more than the water, and that's obviously because the plant has been, I mean, we've, we've been dumping money into the plant to try to get this, you know, fixed up and bring back to, right, so. Right. So lucky, lucky enough for the water plant, we've, we've been basically living on ARPA money to fix all that stuff up, so that shouldn't affect that much, I mean, that's all gonna be paid for by ARPA funds. Cedar Point's doing great, uh, great fund. Nursery gnome's doing very well, thank you. Um, I mean, everything's looking pretty good. Debt service is looking good. So, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three fiscal audit. Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more questions for Tony? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
You wanna close your public hearing?
Close the meeting now?
You close your public hearing?
Yeah, close the public hearing.
At.
Do you have a motion to do that?
Um, no, you can just close it at seven twenty-nine.
Public meeting is now closed. Seven thirty. Okay, any more? The one that we adopted, ordinance two oh five dash point zero one. Yeah, it's up over here. Oh, wait a second.
A second.
Oh, you did, okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, miscellaneous. Tony, you report?
Um, just reviewed council on employee activities when I returned, uh, continued to monitor the EMS aid package, um, worked on initial information for the ambulance pay discussion, submitted my sales tax. Uh, Heather attended election judge training while I was gone, so she's gonna be in charge of that, I'm gonna go too, but, um, she said it was thrilling, did you guys go? Um, we, we found out that there is not a lot of people who read the newsletter for the city of New Richland, um, we've been, for about a week and a half, we dealt with about ten to fifteen people a day who yelled at us for not accepting their P S N payments, and um, they told us they didn't read the newsletter, so. Um, so just a, if you don't read the newsletter, try to read the newsletter, cause occasionally, we do put stuff out there that is important, um, for stuff, so. I know for you guys, council payroll will be Friday.
All right.
Um, there are no birthdays or anniversaries for this section. And that's all I got for you.
Yeah, I got one. I'd like to have some time in the next two or three meetings. Because Heather, Heather went to the election judge training, and you're gonna go to it, could we open it up to the public for any questions on anything related to elections?
What do you mean?
Just have him come in and ask questions? I have some, but I don't.
I am not, that needs to go to Tammy, cause the people that go to the election judge training, that's just to.
Well, that's why I asked him, had somebody here to do that for us.
Oh, we could. We, what, what kind of questions?
All sorts, whatever people can think of.
Um.
What do they do when dead people come in and try to vote, or do they kill in the rolls so that the game gets on by having them vote? That type of questions.
You want clarification on who, how they.
All sorts of questions, that's my question.
That you should direct towards Tammy sooner.
But why can't you come down here and give us time?
I can ask her if she would be willing to, but I don't think it, I don't think it's an appropriate time at a council meeting to do that, I think that'd be a separate time. Yeah.
Advance morning, and say, tell the public, come and say, hey, if you got any questions as far as elections, I mean, Dr. Tammy, on this issue today.
I can reach out to her and ask if she'd be willing to come down to, to do that, or if she'd be willing to just have us direct questions to her, but, yep, I.
I'm good with that.
I want to. Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Mayor and council comments? Anyone? Okay, motion to adjourn at seven thirty-four.
Second.
Move, okay? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Why didn't you just stop?